Welcome to the Prince Edward County Conference Line. Please stand by, you'll be joined in shortly.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome everyone to the October 19th Prince Edward County Planning Commission meeting. Obviously, I'm not Chairman Pragerman, I'm Vice Chair Jack Perry, so I'm gonna try to run the meeting tonight, and we've got enough for a quorum and everything, and so we'll go from there. So I would like to call the meeting to order, and we gotta do a little housekeeping first before we get to the public hearing. Has the members of the commission had a chance to look at the minutes of the last meeting? And if there are any changes, please let us know. If not, is there a motion to approve them?
I make most of them approved as mail.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, raise your right hand, or say aye.
Aye.
Teresa, is that you on the phone? Okay, good, good. Glad you're with us. I would like to open the public hearing for the special use permit for commercial outdoor sports and recreational facility by Sandy River Outdoor Adventures. Rob, would you like to give us a preview of that?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, the county received an application by Sandy River Outdoor Ventures for a special use permit to operate a commercial outdoor sports and recreation facility with lodging and restaurant brew pub on 36.4 acres. It's located off of Fairleigh Road, Rice, Virginia. This is the Clearwater subdivision of Clearwater Lane, this entire property there. This parcel is in an 8-1 agricultural conservation district, and these uses require a special use permit. The public hearing was advertised properly in the October 6th and October 13th Farmville Herald. You have a copy of the adjoining property owners list and the sample letter that I sent to them. You also have a copy of the tax map, and also the potential conditions. At your place setting, I added some modified conditions. After consulting with the county administrator, we added condition number nine. Since this property joins the Sandy River reservoir, it is, development is subject to section 82-31 of Prince Edward County Code, and so we wanted to make sure we reference that in your condition. So number nine is an addition to what was mailed to you last week. We have received three letters of support, and then I received one letter with questions. I do want to make note that this process governs the development action on the property. It does not imply or give any water access or grant anything to the applicant. That is a separate process under section 82-31. That deals with water access, docks, etc. I'll be glad to answer any questions of the commission, if they have them of me.
Can you hear me, Bob?
Yes, ma'am.
What was the change? The change, number nine, it reads, "Development activities shall comply with section 82-31 of the Prince Edward County Code." That's the only change to the staff potential conditions that I mailed to you last week. Okay. Yeah, that's one way to answer the question, how was the access to water option?
Yes.
Because I know you're talking about, you're looking to fail, I think, one reason they haven't shown up. So, what did they say?
Yes, that's correct. And this process does not change that at this point. That code section governs water access.
Is someone here from Sandy River Adventures who would like to address the commission and give us a kind of an overview of the project?
Yes, sir. Yeah. So first, thank you.
Your name, please.
Okay. My name is Mark Smith.
Okay.
I am the president and the owner of Sandy River Outdoor Ventures. It's my wife Candace.
I'm right here.
So tonight, we are proposing a new development, a recreational development, an outdoor adventure resort, similar to what we have on Monroe Church Road. This development will consist of about 25 treehouses, combination of treehouses, safari tents, and similar type of buildings. We will have, on this resort, we are proposing also a boat dock, eventually, we would like to talk about that. Obviously, you know, with the Sandy River reservoir there, that beautiful lake there, we would like to have our guests be able to experience such beauty. We'd like to promote local biking, boating, guided tours on the, possible on the reservoir. We have an idea to do electric bikes on the property. We're only a mile and a half off of Hybridge Trail, and I did it the other day, I rode an electric bike from town to the property and did it in 40 minutes. It was a great bike ride, beautiful country road going there, and I think it'd be great to be able to offer that to Richmonders and people from Virginia Beach and DC, and all the people that are coming to visit us now. We have a collegiate rowing program, going back to the dock, that we were trying to start up for some of the local colleges. I think that that could have an enormous impact on the community, people coming in from all over the country. There's some studies that have been done on that, and I can provide information on that later, just the impact on lodging and restaurants that it would have on the county. You know, guys, I've been in Rice now for 20 years, and I feel like I'm home, and I'm not going anywhere. This is my home. And I want to see Rice do well, I want to see our county do well, and I can say that with this new resort that we're proposing, I think this is really gonna, to change things in a positive direction for the town of Rice specifically, and also for the county and Farmville. We'd like to put in a pool over there, a recreational pool, that would be open to the public, so if you and your children, your kids or family would like to come and use it, we're gonna have a little location there, you'd have to rent a cabana from us. So Candy and I, our background, we grew up in the Caribbean. In fact, we've done a lot of traveling. We've traveled all over this world, seen a lot of wonderful things, and we want to bring those things here at Farmville. So one of the ideas that we have is doing this, you know, maybe two or three pools over there, in fact, heated pools with waterfalls, cabanas, places that you guys could come and enjoy, anybody could. It would be open to the public during the normal, like, day hours. At nighttime, we would close it off to public, it would not be open to the public after a certain hour. Of course, we would like to keep that exclusivity to our guests, that's what they're paying for, that's what the, you know, one of the things that people keep coming back, that, you know, if you really want to ask the secret to why we're doing so well, is because we are very customer service oriented. If a customer calls me at nine o'clock at night and they need firewood, I'm there at nine o'clock at night. If they call 11 o'clock and their TV's not working, I'm there at 11 o'clock at night. My background is also construction, which has allowed me to, you know, build these things for a fraction of the cost of what it would cost you guys to build such things. I've got an experienced crew that works for me, been working for me for 15 years, one of my lead carpenters has been with me for 15 years. We built 10 Peterbilt dealerships across the East Coast, and I'm proud of that. And I'm bringing these guys in, I'm not doing any more Peterbilt jobs, I'm focusing on Farmville, focusing on Prince Edward County. So with that being said, there's also a restaurant. We'd like to bring a restaurant into that area, I think that would be amazing if you guys come out and you could sit by the lake and have that beautiful view. And not that I want to run the restaurant, I plan on building the restaurant and leasing that out to maybe Nash, I've talked to him briefly about it, he sounded somewhat interested. I've talked to a few other locals that have run successful restaurants around here, which we could talk about later, we're just haven't identified who that person would be. I don't want to run a restaurant, I've got enough on my plate, but I definitely want to run a nice, I want a nice restaurant out there. Again, that would have limited hours, you know, we're not trying to tear the walls down and have big parties out there, that is not my intention. Our intention is to run a responsible outdoor recreational company. Nature Center, Conference Center, I think that, I think this area needs a big conference center, I think we need one, I think that you guys know that we need one. The idea is that we will have a place for corporations to come that wouldn't normally come here, and we can do it at a better price, and we can do it, give them a better experience than they're getting anywhere else. People are tired of going to those concrete jungles, they don't want that anymore. People want to get connected with nature, they want to be out in places in rural Virginia. And we just need to open that door for them. So that Nature Center will be, you know, I plan on having maybe a few local species, nothing, I don't believe in really caging animals, but I might have, you know, a few some turtles, some frogs, some, you know, just maybe a few snakes, something like that. Also, just, you know, an educational trail that we plan on building. In fact, I want to name this trail after Mr. and Mrs. Yates, who have agreed to sell this property to us, which I thank you very much, I appreciate that very much, guys, and given us this opportunity. But that nature trail will be an interactive trail, so that, you know, again, you and your kids are welcome to come out there and walk the trail. I'm open book, I mean, I want people to be part of this. Of course, if you're out there and you're causing problems, you're gone. We don't want that. We want, you know, good, kind-hearted people that are there for, you know, for the right So this nature trail, you'll be able to walk down, I think I've estimated it'll be about a mile and a half long, and in that trail, you could either ride a bike, you could walk it, you have an interactive map on your phone that will tell you what some of the trees are out there, some of the local species that are out there, what's in that reservoir, what kind of fish live in the reservoir, what kind of birds are flying around. I think that's cool, you know, and I want to bring that to our area. I think that it has value, and it's something that I can, it'll help sell what we're doing. Treetop, zipline, bridge, climbing wall, you know, of course, we guys, we came to you 10 years ago, I think some of you were here 10 years ago when we first applied for our first permit to build the adventure treetop, the adventure park, and that's just been a tremendous success for us. We have brought in thousands of people from all over the country, not just, I mean, not just because of the tree, but we'll talk about that, the treetop, but we were the first treetop course in the state of Virginia. And thank you very much, guys, for allowing us to do that, I really appreciate that, it's helped to build our business to where it is today. So there's so much that this county has to offer, I mean, it's such a beautiful area, and if we can do it responsibly, which I think that I can, that we can, I think that we have a wonderful thing going for us, our family, my family, building a successful business, building a sustainable business, that's one of my priorities, guys, I just want you to know that, too, that's another reason why, I mean, I could be happy with just staying with what I have, and I don't need to build a distillery, I don't need to build this thing, I don't need to do that. I'm geared to do it, I can't just sit on a couch, I've got to do stuff, and since I'm not going up and down the road for Peterbilt anymore, I want to do it here. I want to use this energy in Prince Edward. So taking that time and to building a beautiful place that everybody is welcome, and that we can all benefit from, I think it is, it would be a great benefit if you guys would allow us to build Sandy River Outdoor Adventure 2 at Clearwater. Any questions?
Mr. Smith, if the special use permit is granted, what, kind of what's your timeline? I notice you've got three phases, and when do you participate, maybe starting, and that kind of thing?
You know, it all boils down to funding, dollars and cents, right? Immediately, I want to build at least five, you know, combination of treehouses, maybe a couple safari tents out there. That's immediately, I would like to do that, January 1st. I'd like to have it open by March, not March, sorry, no, that's the distillery. I'd like to have this open by summer, okay? With, if I can get the funding, which I think I'm gonna be able to get it all, I'm just gonna keep on going. I mean, I'd like to have it all open in the next three years, it's a lot of, we're talking about a lot of building here, the pools specifically, I mean, these are not your regular pool. I actually built my pool at Sandy River, everybody told me, "Don't do it, you can't do it." Well, I can read plans, and I did do it, and I did, I think I did a fine job with it. And so I'm gonna build much bigger pools, and I'm gonna locate them next to the restaurant and the Nature Center, it's gonna group that thing together, Conference Center and all of that. So that would be, that's the big one. That would be probably, that would be the second phase, maybe even third phase, actually third phase, the nature, that big build out in there in the middle. So to shorten, I hope to have it all done in 36 months, 36 to 48 months.
Does anybody else have any questions for Mr. Smith?
I'd also like to add, guys, that, I want to give you my phone number. My phone number, for everybody to know, is 434-390-2225. I want you to know that I'm an open book, I'm an honest guy, I pride myself on it. If you want to call me and have a conversation, you don't agree with something I'm doing, I'll sit down, listen and talk to you, because I'm not always right, sometimes I'm wrong. And I like to hear the other side of the story, I find that, you know, there's just a lot of things that we just don't, we all don't know the story, you know, until you've been through it a while. So, you know, you guys, some of y'all, I don't know if you live down the road or not, but if you do, you know, I want you to know that, that, you know, I'm a responsible person, and I plan on being there. I'm not, I'm not gonna build this thing and get out of here, I'm gonna be here, I'm community-oriented, I want to be here, so.
Okay. Any questions?
I have one question. Have you already received a commitment for the funds for this project?
Yes, sir, I mean, I have the money. I have, not the whole, all of the money to do the whole project, but I have the money for the first phase.
First phase?
Yes, sir. And I'm working on the money for the second and third phase. And I could say, yes, I have, but I, you know, without it being in writing, I haven't received all the money for the second and third phase.
Thank you, sir, we appreciate it. Five other people have signed up, and Ms. Smith is one of them, since you're already there, would you like to add anything to that?
You know, I feel like we might benefit as well to offer some interesting job, you know, versatility of like being, the hospitality, the catering, that whole aspect of it, so we'll be able to provide more jobs to the community. And then, like, growth, even the little town of Rice, all those cute little old buildings, maybe someone will decide to open up an ice cream shop, or this or that, and that would be phenomenal, because that's such a cute little underserved, you know, space that could, you know, bring more attraction to customers coming here, so.
Actually, I'd like to add on to what she, the first thing she said, and I got lost here somewhere along the line, but the second reason I'm really doing this is because of them, these two guys over here, you know, our managers, not just them, but all of our employees, they mean so much to me, and I want them to do well, I want to pay them good money, I want to give them benefits. And where we are in our business right now, it's for me and my family, yeah, we can do right, all right, but I want to be able to offer sustainable jobs that pay good wages. That's really important to me, because having a good workforce, having people that make good money, that they're happy to be at work, and they get along with the people that they're with and their employer, it's just, it's just great, it makes for good business. And I want these guys to get good health insurance, I want them to have benefits, I want them to stay here in this community, I want them to retire. And I feel like with this next step, that we will be able to do that. With the additional 25 units, there's no question in my mind, these guys will be making good pay, and they'll be able to stay here and retire here, and that's important to me.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Next person that signed up to speak is Kyle Ruffin?
We could have been assigned sheet.
Is that?
Wait, I'm sorry, I just slipped the.
Is there a Mr. Ruffin here? Oh, okay. Please come up and speak to the mic, please, sir.
My name's Kyle Ruffin, I started working for Mark in May, and I actually just graduated my degree in Recreation Parks and Tourism, and from what I've seen so far, no one across Virginia's really taken it as seriously for what Virginia has to offer. If you look around the country, such as North Carolina, where they have the American White Water Center, that's something that started as a small nonprofit and has grown to such a, like, at a extent, sorry, where is I'm thinking of, grown at such a length where it's now providing the outdoor experience to people that never thought they'd be able to. And that is similar to what kind of Mark's been able to do here, where people that never thought they'd be up in the trees are now coming to an adventure park and doing things they never thought they'd be able to do before, and they've even had companies, what's like a big company you've had do team building?
Capital One.
Capital One, they've had companies come in hundreds and things like that to Farmville, and bring all those people, and we're actually gonna have a group come in November with 30 people, and have catering through Charlie's Waterfront Cafe. So it's not only providing for Sandy River, but providing for all of the local companies that are here, and I think that's really helping the community and kind of, like, the low times when college is out and there's not a whole lot of people here to be spending money, it's filling those gaps and helping the community be sustainable throughout the entire year, as well as grow that potential business and open more things. Also, if you look into North Carolina, there's the, I might mispronounce it, but it's called the NOC, they've started doing trips out there, they've kind of, not the same thing, but they as well run programs, they do things outdoors, and they have really made it a place where people can go and experience things they never thought they'd be able to before. And obviously, Farmville has a lot to offer, we have the reservoir, we have the trail, we have trees everywhere, we have mountains, not mountains, but hills that people can mountain bike on, and kind of what is being done is just using what we have here to bring people in, and then when they get brought in, they have the ability to stay here, see what we have. I know a lot of people that come to us, go to Greenfront, they go to Press Club, they go everywhere in Farmville, and from what we hear, they love it and they want to come back, and they always want to bring different parts of their family, come have family reunions, things like that. I know one thing Mark was thinking about as well, is building some lodges out at the second property as well, so when companies want to come in the hundreds, and they want to come in bigger numbers like that, that we can't currently accommodate for, they would then have a place to come and stay, and then instead of us providing 30 people that have catering, we'd then go and provide it for a couple hundred people, that'd bring even more economic growth for the company and for the entire community. That's all I have to say, is I don't have any questions for me. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Ruffin.
Thank you.
Maggie Brown?
Hi, I'm Maggie Brown, I'm actually the Operations Manager of Sandy River Outdoor Adventures Resort. You guys have heard Mark and Candy and Kyle say about how we're expanding and we're growing. I want to take a moment to tell you what we're doing now, that will add to what we're trying to do in the future. Now, oh, and also, I studied, I also studied outdoor recreation at Rappahar University as well, just like Kyle did. So what we're doing now is actually something I'm extremely passionate about, and I can't stress enough that it's just so amazing to be a part of an experience like this. But what we're bringing to Farmville, to Prince Edward County, to Rice, Virginia, we're bringing new customers, we're bringing new people, we're bringing culture, we're bringing diversity, people from out of the country, from around the state, they're coming here, and they're coming to Sandy River Outdoor Adventures, and we're sending them to Farmville. I'm sending them every time I do a check-in, hey, fish and pig, McAdoo's, all these different things you can do in Farmville, I'm sending them here. And so is Mark, so is Candy, and so is Kyle, and so is the rest of the Sandy River team. And there's so many things that we're doing that people have never done before, like the treetop adventures at the adventure park. Every time I do a session, I get all new climbers. I've never done this before, but I'm super excited to be experiencing this with you. And we get people who've never been on a kayak before, never been on a river before, never done paddle boarding, never done yoga, never stayed in a teepee, never stayed in a cabin, and they're coming here to experience it, which I think is just phenomenal. And if you let us, we'll just continue to grow that, and we'll continue to allow the customer service and the experience, and allow people to come and explore Farmville just a little bit more. And I can't stress how much I love being in Farmville, and how much I love working at Sandy River, and I hope that you guys see that, too.
Thank you very much.
Just one thing, a true thing I'd like to add, can I add one more thing? Just one thing, another thing that I'm really proud of at Sandy River, the diversity of people that we are attracting, it's amazing, I'm not kidding. I mean, we have anywhere from Hasidic Jews, Muslims, Koreans, Chinese, you name it.
I mean, we have anywhere from Hasidic Jews, Muslims, Koreans, Chinese, you name it, African-Americans, white people, you name it, we're all there. And that's amazing. I've never seen a resort that operated quite like ours and I'm really proud of that.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Osen Smith, hope I said that right? Okay, okay. The C looked like an O, sorry. No problem, no problem. Okay. Tim Thorpe?
Thank you guys. My name is Tim Thorpe. President and owner of J.R. Thorpe Trucking Company in Rice, and I'm here tonight to wholeheartedly support this request. You know, I truly cannot think of a more positive business to have in this county and the Rice community. I applaud Mark and Candy for what they've done so far in regards to the cabin, teepees, zip line, and soon to be distillery. So, you know, my concern, if you don't support something like this, what kind of message are we sending to other companies or people looking to locate or relocate in this county? So I strongly encourage all of you guys to support them and their requests, and I really appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thorpe. Is there anybody else that would like to say anything that's here that maybe hadn't signed up? Is there anybody on the phone that would like to say something? Okay. I would like, I'm sorry? Okay, go ahead, Ms. Ball.
That's correct.
Yes, ma'am.
That's correct. Yeah, we're not trying to do a bit of bar, so to speak. I'm not interested in loud music and people acting like a bunch of people that I don't want there. We care about our guests, we care about our community, and we care about making money and having a viable company. So we realize and understand the importance of being responsible, responsible stewards of this resort.
Did you hear that okay, Ms. Ball? Oh, I'm sorry. Microphone, please.
So, yes, ma'am, I mean, okay, so we will have, it will be closed to the public at nighttime. We are not trying to open up a bar that is open to one minute, midnight or one o'clock in the morning, that's not going to happen. We are not interested in that. We are a family oriented business. We have found the value of operating as such. I do not like and do not want anything to do with dealing with drunk people, so that's not going to happen, nothing late at night. Absolutely, yes, ma'am, and I couldn't agree with you more, that also means a lot to me. We occasionally, even with the resort that we have right now on Monroe Church Road, we send staff out at least once a week to pick up trash along the side of the road. I think that one of my neighbors is here tonight, he could probably vouch for me on that. We try to keep the road clean. I realize then the value of having a clean, healthy environment. And this is not a, this is not a partying type of environment, this is a family oriented resort. Thank you very much. And listen, please, give me a call anytime and or stop by Sandy River. My name is Mark Smith and I would love to meet you and talk to you personally and get to know you and make sure that I am a responsible neighbor.
Okay, all right, thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, please stop by.
Thank you, ma'am, for calling in. Is there anybody else on the phone that would like to say anything?
Somebody might call you if your TV, if their TV's not working at eleven o'clock.
They have and they will, that's okay. It's always the best opportunity.
Seeing no more speakers, I'd like to close the public hearing portion of the meeting and pass it, we'll discuss it among the commissioners. And Rob is going to go over some potential conditions that we will consider for the project.
As, as we do with any application, I have prepared potential conditions if this was recommended for approval. And we have seventeen total conditions, I'm going to read those for the record, so it'll be quite lengthy. Development activities on the site shall be limited to those as specified in the special use permit application and site plan. The final locations of incidental facilities may be adjusted provided that no adjustment violates any buffer, setbacks, or other statutory requirement. The concepts reflected in the filed special use permit dated September twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-one are hereby made part of these developmental conditions. Final site plan approval for the commercial outdoor sports and recreation facility shall be submitted to the Prince Edward County Planning Commission for final review and approval pursuant to Article Four developmental standards of the Prince Edward County Code zoning ordinance. Any proposed expansion of operation, change of activities, or additional facilities or activities shall be submitted to the Prince Edward County Planning Commission and Community Development Office for review prior to implementation. Any changes may be subject to permit amendment procedures including public hearings. All buildings within the property shall be developed as a cohesive entity, ensuring that building placement, architectural treatment, parking lot lighting, landscaping, trash disposal, vehicular and pedestrian circulation, and all other development elements work together functionally and aesthetically. All landscaping shall be mulched and maintained to a reasonable satisfaction of the Prince Edward County Planning Commission and Community Development Director. Any vegetation found to be of poor condition shall be replaced and/or improved at the reasonable discretion of the planning and zoning Community Development Director or his designee. Under environmental, we've got four conditions, all potential pollution control measures, erosion and sediment control measures, stormwater control facilities, and all construction shall, activities shall comply with the requirements of the appropriate federal, state, and local regulation and ordinances. All facilities for the provision of potable water and sanitation and wastewater disposal systems shall be approved by the Virginia Department of Health. Any development activities of a structural, a structural or land disturbing nature not specifically addressed by these conditions shall be in conformance with applicable provisions of federal, state, and local statutes and regulations. Development activities shall comply with Section eighty-two dash thirty-one of the Prince Edward County Code. Under transportation, we have all entrance permits must be authorized by the Virginia Department of Transportation. Development activities shall comply with all requirements of VDOT. All internal roads used for public access shall be of compacted earth or have a minimum of four-inch stone base or shall be paved. Adequate area shall be provided on-site to accommodate parking of all employees and patrons. It shall be the responsibility of the permittee to assure that employees and patrons park only on-site and not on any highway right-of-way or on adjoining or adjacent parcels unless written consent is provided by owner or owners thereof. General conditions include all exterior lighting shall be designed and installed as to minimize glare on adjoining properties or any public access road. All lighting shall be of full cutoff type fixtures. Outdoor storage of trash containers shall be situated at rear buildings and shall be appropriately screened. The permittee is responsible for the appearance of the site, including litter pickup and other orderly site appearance. This permit is non-transferable except and unless written notice from the permittee regarding the transfer and a signed document from the proposed new permittee is received by the Planning and Community Development Office, which states that the new permittee agrees to comply with all terms and conditions imposed with the original permit issuance. If the proposed new permittee desires to amend the original permit conditions, amendments must be addressed by the Prince Edward County Planning Commission and Board of Supervisors through the special use permit process. Failure of permittee to conform to all terms and conditions may result in revocation of the special use permit if said failure or failures are not corrected or addressed to the satisfaction not to be unreasonably withheld of the county within thirty days of written notice from the county.
Mr. Smith, I think you got a copy of those. Okay, with those, okay. Okay, discussion among the commission here. Anybody have any questions or comments?
Well, I think Rob's done a pretty thorough job of going through, picking out potential conditions that would need to be addressed. And usually the commission has something to add to it, but I don't know of anything myself that I can see that needs to be added to it.
Thank you, Therese.
I have a quick story, I was on another board and I was at a meeting and conversations going on, and one of the members of the board goes, man, I was up at this place this weekend and we stayed in teepees. I was like, in my backyard. But anyhow, I was kind of interested and he was very complimentary of y'all's facilities there and enjoyed my view of this as well too. And if nobody has anything else, I'd like to make a motion that we forward this to the Board of Supervisors with these potential conditions being added to it.
Do I hear a second? I'd like to remind everybody, we only make a recommendation and we pass it along one way or another to the board, Board of Supervisors makes the final decision on this kind of thing. So there's a motion on the floor and it's been seconded. All in favor of the motion, raise your right hand or say aye. Therese, that was an aye? Okay. Motion has passed. Thank you very much. We will pass that along to the Board of Supervisors. Thank you. Okay, Rob, do we have a review of supervisor actions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. At the, hold on one second.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, at the last board meeting, the board voted to, I'll wait a second.
Okay, just, yeah, just wait.
Please take a few more steps. All right. At the last, at the board meeting, the special use permit for the commercial collection service by Joseph Ryan Wood was approved and it did include the condition that it would be, that no restaurant and food items be stored on-site in any container at any time. The CIP plan was approved. And also an item that y'all didn't deal with but does come into play as we move towards our new business item, the solar revenue share was approved by the county. So that will take, on large utility scale facilities, the county would utilize solar, would utilize a revenue share, which is fourteen hundred dollars, a megawatt per year assessment for taxation purposes. And that's outlined in the code of Virginia. So just wanted to make y'all aware of that item that was also passed at the board meeting.
Is that used in neighboring counties, maybe, or?
Yes, that, that's the, that is a, it's mandated by state code that that, that price, that the fourteen hundred dollars is assessed. And if a county wants to utilize revenue share, they have to pass an ordinance. And Cumberland County, and I believe Charlotte County have also done that. Most counties are doing that because the machinery and tools taxation does negatively affect the composite index of schools. It counts against the school funding. So using a revenue share removes that and, so it's a better way of tax revenue for the county. Want to move to old business?
Okay, old business, we, highway corridor overlay district ordinance amendment?
Yes, sir. If you'll hold on one second. At your, in your previous meeting, I think back in, it was back in the summer, we talked about the highway corridor overlay district. Highway corridor overlay district is used to protect scenic beauty and view sheds, entrance, enhance levels of transportation services throughout the county, and increase property values. What this does, it creates aesthetic facades for buildings, uniform signage, lighting, et cetera. We looked at the, this is currently on the books, but it stops just short of Lowe's going south and needed some language tweaks that county administrator and myself have worked on, which includes integrated development, orientation of buildings, specifically materials which would include stucco, brick, architectural block, standing seam, metal roofs, and we want to discourage reflective glass and metal wall panels. So what you've got in front of you tonight is a draft. What is in, we've got a few cross oats, but mostly new language. What we've got in here in bold and underlined text is new language. And then we've also, the main change, we've extended the area of this to include Commerce Road and also go all the way down to the Worsham Turn Lane on fifteen. We're seeing quite a bit of development as you have, in my time here in the last year or so, we've had a couple of projects that have been approved through you all for special use permits that still we haven't gotten to building phase yet, like a lawn and garden center. There is increased development occurring down towards, down the fishing pit, some properties have been sold, some houses have been sold. So that is an area of high growth. And of course Commerce Lane is where we've got industrial park properties, et cetera. So you can certainly increase, I mean, expand on these areas or you can, you think, if you think it needs to be brought in a little tighter, that's fine. But again, this is just staff recommendation and we're seeking to have, if you agree with it and you think it's ready, to authorize staff to go to public hearing on this at your next meeting, if you think it's ready.
This is like, Alicia Davis started working on this years ago, right?
Yes.
It does look good, I think it is a wise saying to get ahead of it because you can see, I was in Lynchburg one day, and prior to maybe some of the stipulations being put on, the signage, how you pitch an area, they got the signs, one trying to do the others to be the tallest and the brightest, and then you use the yard behind you with type of signs, which is a whole lot more appealing than the gaudy signs and all they do. So I think it's definitely something we need to look into.
Yeah, what this, what this also encourages, encourages landscaped islands in a parking area, so your landscape is just not a blanket area of concrete or asphalt, it's got some some greener, greenery there. And aesthetically, it's a better fit and flows better with what you see in the town. Again, this just expands the area a little bit and adds a little bit more language to give examples and a little bit more guidance to an applicant.
The spruce up the front of the building.
Yes.
Would this include Dominion, anything down Dominion Drive past the FSA office? past the FSA office and where Tribe Bar?
We, it only, right now, the way I've got it drafted, it only extended 1,000 feet from the right-of-way of Highway 15. If you wish for it to go down.
We've got some more, the county has more lots in there.
Yeah, if you wish for it to include Dominion, I can certainly add that, and we can advertise it with Dominion Drive. We can certainly do that if you think you want to do that.
Since we're going all the way back to Germantown on Commerce, that's what my question is on.
We can certainly do that. I can add that, too, if you want to make that, if you're ready, we can make that motion to add.
I'd like to make that into a motion.
Yeah, that seems, it seems to be the same type of road, right?
Yes.
Is there a second? All in favor, please raise your right hand. Or say aye?
So we will advertise that for your November meeting, and it will include Dominion Drive.
This thing has been, like, almost shockingly misunderstood in the past. So get ready for that. People just didn't, they didn't read it, you know, a year or so ago, or two years ago. Yeah, it's just.
That's why Rob brought this back up.
Yeah, they thought it was something completely different than what it is.
Alicia's been gone for another year.
Any more old business? Thank you for your hard work on that.
I have one question. I noticed that they are working on Route 628, the back top of Route 628. And 724 is about a quarter mile right around the corner. And at one point, they had it on the, it was on the plant, on the plan for some reason. Yeah, you recall. And my question is, why can't we go ahead and do that quarter of mile 724 and that all the equipment and everything is right there? We save the county a lot of money, other than coming back at some point to do it.
I will have to get, I'll pass that question on to Scott Frederick, VDOT representative, and have that answer for you at your next meeting.
Basically, we meet every year, the County Board of Supervisors does, and reviews what roads we're going to do. And I know it might be silly that we didn't include that. Maybe that should have been brought to our attention at the time. But, you know, there are a lot of times, like, sometimes you always just do a portion of a road. You ever travel Millers Lake Road? But anyhow, it's done in three different segments. Basically, what happens is, when the money runs out, you go as far as you, you're allocated so much money every year. And you try, obviously, we don't just try, we use it all up. But that's why, my, it's silly, we'll get to a point, like, say with Millers Lake Road, that we can afford to do a third of it one year, then we had to stop. And then it took another, so many years to build up enough funding for that to do the second third of it, and so forth and so on. So it might just be the fact they didn't have enough money to do that whole, even though it might be a little short segment. We don't get a whole lot of money, and what is it, per mile? $1,000 a mile?
Plus.
Yeah. So anyhow, and we only get allocated $300,000 a year or so. So as many dirt roads there are in Prince Edward County, and everybody wants them done, it gets eaten up real quick.
Well, what I noticed, Camel Crossing, it goes right across 628, right across 360. And I'm saying, why did we leave 724, and it's right there? I mean, all they have to do is just go around and.
It might be also traffic count. You've got to have 50 cars a day?
More than 50. Be considered for the program.
More than 50 cars, and then so many households per mile, too. So see, some of those might not fall into being qualified because they don't meet those criteria.
Oh, okay, okay.
So if you want your road done, and they put out one of those little rubber strips, that's over top of them.
Okay, that's, I wanted to know.
Keep that in the bag, you know?
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Any other old business, Rob?
No, sir.
New business, please.
We have a new application by CEP Solar to operate a 25-megawatt alternating current, utility-scale solar generation facility that has a total site acreage of 304.6 acres. About 70% of that will be used for solar panels. The property site is crossbound existing Southside Electric Distribution Line, and will not require construction of an additional substation. Since I got this late enough, so I couldn't meet advertising for this month, we didn't advertise this, but we, this does require a review under Virginia Code, Section 15.2-2232, to ensure that the public utility facility is in substantial accord with the comprehensive plan, and also, this use does require a special use permit to be, for, to be approved, to be built. I gave you the application sheet itself and the site plan. I did bring with me the hard copy. This is the application. It's about 293 pages. So I didn't give you all that paper tonight. And we actually do have a CEP solar representative that's come tonight. I don't know if he wants to speak. Again, we're not having a public hearing. That will be next month. But this, the request would be to, for you to authorize staff to advertise a 2232 review and a special use permit for this application at the November 19 regular meeting.
I'm moving to do seven.
Okay.
Second? All in favor, raise your right hand or say aye? So passed. Sir, would you like to make a quick comment on the remarks?
Yeah, I'll just say, you know, come see me after the meeting. I've got two handouts that tell you a little more about the solar project, some frequently asked questions about solar, and some facts about this project in particular. The preserve plan, the environmental benefits, as well as the tax revenue that we'll provide to the county. So more than happy to provide these to you and give you a copy out.
And what's your name, sir?
Joseph Salholt.
Thank you, Ms. Salholt. Okay, anything else, Rob?
No, sir, I have no other business items.
Seeing or hearing no other business, I close the meeting. See you on November 16.